And Mayor Ross, we're ready when you are.
I'm, thank you so much. I need the, I need our city attorney to, to read out, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item on closed session for the study session. It was an item of anticipated litigation. You received a briefing from the city attorney's office. There was no other reportable action on that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am calling the October 20, 22nd, 2022nd, the 22nd Regular City Council Meeting to Order. We are going to start with Councilmember Carnavale leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you will please remain standing, we have quite the treat for our national anthem sung by the Coachella a cappella group. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to everyone for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And remain standing, please. Councilmember Lamb, will you please? Please allow us your invocation.
First of all, thank you, so, thank you so much for that beautiful rendition. Let us cherish and celebrate our shared capacity for reason and compassion because it is our similarities that move us forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You may please be seated.
City Clerk, will you please have a roll call? Councilmember Carnavale?
Here.
Councilmember Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Gregory?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I'm here. Thank you.
And City Clerk, are there any agenda finalizations we should know about?
I believe we have no changes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And public comment, City Clerk, will you please read the statement of participation for public comment?
Public comment is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are within the city council's jurisdiction but not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or request that a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. If you are a member of the public and you wish to address the city council, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and submit it to the city clerk. You will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you have materials or other items to present to the members of the city council, please do not approach them. All materials shall be presented to the city clerk for distribution. And Mayor Ross, we did have one request to speak. If I can have Anthony Maskey's? Thank you, sir. Okay, I did not receive any other request to speak forms. If you're a member of the public and you wish to comment on items that are not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, sir. Would you please state your name for the record and please approach the lectern? Thank you, sir. And I see no other public comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So now we will have council comments where each of us will share with you what we've been up to. And I'd like to start down here, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. See, last week I attended the ribbon cutting, the Cathedral City Supercuts. They've been there about 35 years up at the St. Brother Shopping Center. And then along with some council members, I went to the James Workman Walk to School. And I did a lot of walking. I don't think I've walked that much in a while, but I made it there, you know. And then I had two updates with the city manager, Ann. I spoke with Pastor Kershaw. He has a prisoner in need of housing. And so I reached out to Ann and were trying to get her some, some housing for him. I think we get him some extended stay. He's lost his, his apartment. Then I have another family that came to me that they, they're being evicted come November 1st, grandparents, two kids, you know, middle-aged and no money, and they're being evicted. So we're trying to find housing first for them. It's, there's a lot of sadness going on, terrible times for these individuals, and we'll see what we can do. Also contacted Riverside and see what they can help him with. Spoke to a cannabis owner that's having issues with a dispensary, but I went ahead and passed that on to city manager Ann and on to legal. Let's see, I'll be attending Halloween at the Panorama Park this Saturday. You gonna do it again? I can't wait to go there and see that. And Tony, you do a great job out there, and I just have fun watching all the costumes and the dogs out there. And then Sunday, of course, Spooktacular. I'm sure some council members will be there as well. I know a council member, Gutierrez, will be out there with his bags and grabbing all the candy he can. And then I'll attend the Boys and Girls Club Garden ribbon cutting. And it looks like the Sun Community Credit Union groundbreaking was postponed. And then November, I'll be attending Desert Fad's Barber Shop Grand Open on Ramon Road. And ribbon cutting for Cathedral City Canyon Crossing on CB Link, which is really exciting, that bicycle path. And we're gonna make it nice and safe so people can get over the Cathedral Canyon. And don't forget, daylight savings is coming November 2nd. I think it's fall back, right? Spring forward, fall back. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank, thank you very much. I was, one of the three of us, and, and we were able to attend the League of California Cities, and that was in Long Beach. And it's a potpourri of different programs and workshops and seminars. But one of the ones that I elected to attend, and it was really wonderful, it was called the Speed Talk. But it was a gentleman who's the executive director of their library in Santa Ana. And he talked about the ways in which he wanted to improve service, the library services, to the community. And he talked about the consolidation. They had a big, huge library that was historic, and they divided it into different sections to maximize the space to be used part of as a community center. And also, they were able to get a grant where they had a self-contained, self-serve kiosk placed in area of Santa Ana that was not close to the library, where you could go to the main library, get your library card, and use the self-service section. They had seating area. Anyway, it was just a wonderful program. And so it was really lots of valuable information that was shared with us. Secondly, I wanted to share with you, I don't know how many of you get the Desert Sun. I still get the copy delivered to me. But our Cathedral City High School band has been in need of update, updating their uniforms, and they did, and they got a full spread in the Desert Sun. So I congratulate them on that. I was able to attend the Cathedral City Fire Department, their Pancake Breakfast. They do it annually, and this is such a wonderful community outreach. And it was at Fire Station 1, right here on Buddy Rogers. I took a drive with Bob McKechnie, and Bob McKechnie, Sue Townsley, and Karen Riley were responsible for putting together a grant, and it was for a peace initiative. And now Cathedral City is recognized as one of the cities of peace, one of 450 globally. And so Bob and I took a drive down Date Palm. And if you're going from Highway 10 south down Date Palm, you can see the big, huge bulletin board that they were able to get sponsors for, and it says, "Choose Peace." So that's, it's a great recognition for Cathedral City and a great recognition of how we need to live. The, I did attend on Saturday. There were many competing activities, but I chose to go to the Cathedral City Fire Department. They were offering a workshop. It was on hands-only CPR and Stop the Bleed. It was at the main fire station, our Emergency Operations Center, right on Desert Vista. And there were only two of us that were there. And so we got this wonderful personalized training on how to provide CPR for those in need. Infant CPR, I learned that the AED stands for Automated External Defibrillator, and how to use that, and where, where they're located, and actually, you know, how to do that whole process. And I really thank them. And the Stop the Bleed, we were able to actually work at the workshop, doing the demonstrations of how to put on a tourniquet. And anyway, it was wonderful. So I was very disappointed that only two people showed up. And so we're putting our heads together and hopefully moving it to a different location with the same trainers. Firefighter Paramedic Delatory and Firefighter Paramedic Skinner did an admirable job, and they are on the case. And so we're gonna take our show on the road. And the reason I, the prompted, I had a health emergency in January, and I happened to be mayor during Tropical Storm Hillary. And during that time, there were hours where folks were not able to move about the cabin. They were not able to leave their homes. So the, the resulting awareness to me is that I need and your family needs to be ready for two to three days of not having emergency services available to you if the emergency is huge. So how, how, it's important for us to be self-contained during that time. So anyway, it was a great, great experience.
Thank you, Fire Department.
We had a presentation today from College of the Desert. They were talking about the progress on Roadrunner Motors. So if you have an opportunity, go by on Highway 111 up Margot Murphy, and you can see all the, all the building they're doing and construction work in preparation for Roadrunner Motors, which is gonna open in 2027. I happened to attend the third workshop of the Economic Development, and that, that training is provided by the Small Business Workshop. It's on Thursday nights, and they're doing a wonderful job. And my hats off to Eric Bessaral and Victor Gomez and Andy Feierstein for making this happen, because it's really a tremendous support to our small businesses in our community. And that's it. And the last thing I'm gonna end with, I've got my Dodger shirt on, and my Dodger blue, because I've been a Dodger fan longer than I've lived in Cathedral City. And when I was a little girl, we were sitting at our kitchen table in Burbank, and my mom was an avid reader of the Burbank Review. My dad read the Los Angeles Times, and they talked about how the city council and county were deciding whether to go ahead and actually make his ravine Dodger Stadium. And I'm so glad they did. It was the first time I ever even heard that there was a city council. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Since we last met, of course, we, SCD Council, we always do things together. So I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that Councilmember Carnavale mentioned. But one thing he forgot to mention was that after the Walk to School Day from Century Park to the middle school, the principal took us on a tour of the remodeling and addition of James Workman Middle School. It is absolutely incredible. It's a multimillion-dollar improvements that they're doing to the middle school. And I was really impressed how, when I went to, to middle school, how different the classrooms are, and just the state of the art from the entrance to everything they're doing. It's just absolutely beautiful, and I can't wait to see once it's all completed. It is deceiving that when you drive in the outside by James Workman Middle School, you don't see, it looks like a middle school that is not that large. But once you step into the school, once you go inside, you can, you're amazed how large it is. All the remodeling and additions that are going on are behind the school. So if you ever get a chance to stop by, I'm sure the principal will be happy to give you a tour. And I also attended the Battle of the, of the Badges here on Amphitheater. For those who attend or have never attended, they fight three rounds, two-minute rounds, and it's all between police officers, veterans, military, and also firefighters. And they wear gloves and heavier glove, there were heavier gloves and headgear. So it's really difficult to get a knockout. And for the first time that I witnessed that, two people were actually knocked out. So it was, the fights were great. The crowd keeps getting larger and larger. And all the money that is, that is raised goes to charities, from our senior center to the Boys and Girls Club and to other local organizations as well. And also, if you wanna know more about where right now, we're starting our Cathedral City season, all the events that are going on, from the Halloween, Spooktacular, to any other event. If you need more information, go to www.d discover cathedralcity.com, and also on Facebook on Discover Cathedral City. There you will find everything that's going on in Cathedral City. And one of the events that might not be listed in there, but is very important, all Cathedral City residents are encouraged that if you have any legal documents that need to be shredded, the shredding event, the next shredding event will happen on November 1st, Saturday, November 1st. Every resident of Cathedral City, per person, you can bring up to four boxes, office boxes, to here, the, to right in front of our city hall here, from 8:00 to 9:00 on Saturday, November 1st, and they'll shred them for free. Four boxes per person. And the next one will be on December 6th. And there will be, I believe it's once a month. So if you need more information, visit Cathedral City or call our city office here. And also, don't forget, another event that is starting is Taste and Sounds of Cathedral City. That takes place at the Amphitheater and starts Tuesday, November 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Now, if you like music, or you like to have a little bit of fun, the first performers are going to be a band called the Radio, no, the, the Dreamboats. If you haven't, if you haven't heard them, if you haven't attended one of their concerts, you have to. It's amazing. These guys play so many songs from the 60s and the 70s, from the Beatles to Frank Sinatra. The energy's incredible.
They're dream.
Yeah, they're Dreamboats. It brings a lot of people on their feet, they're dancing, they're singing. And you must get there. Starts at 5:00. If you want a good seat, you, I assure you, you have to get there probably 20 to 30 minutes earlier because it gets packed. It's going to be, if you get there a little after 5:00, you might just be standing room only. There will be at least 1,500 people plus. So it's free, so make sure you attend. And if you're an adult, if you wanna bring adult beverages, do so, but you have to be respectful and responsible. They are, they are allowed. And also, to get the full schedule of Taste and Sounds at Cathedral City, visit discover cathedralcity.com. And there's a lot of other things that I'll be doing in the near future, like mentioned by Councilmember Carnavale, which will be the break, the ruin cutting for CB Link, and also a barber shop as well that we'll be attending. And that includes, that's all that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tim?
All right. Thank you so much. Yes, it's been a busy little over two weeks since our last meeting. As was already mentioned, the, the mayor and Councilmember Lamb and I, along with the interim city manager, attended the Cal Cities Annual Conference in, that was held in Long Beach. My speed session was on Vlog Cameras that I attended, but I attended a lot of other training. I wanna make sure to thank our city attorney firm, Burke and Bertech, both for their hospitality. I also attended a number of LGBTQ Caucus events and City PAC, that's their Political Action Committee, events for the League of Cities while I was there. And it was very educational and always good to see and talk to people from other cities that are facing some of the same issues that we're facing, and then also seeing some of the great things that they're doing in their cities. So, and then on October 11th, as many of my colleagues did, I did attend the Cathedral City Fire Department's Pancake Breakfast. Thank you, Chief, and all of your staff for putting that on. It's a great outreach to the community. And, and Chief surprised us by announcing an improved ISO rating here in Cathedral City. So an ISO rating of two instead of three, which is excellent. Shows the great work that our fire department is doing. Also can, especially for businesses, affect their insurance rates. So anything that can make insurance go down a little bit, that's always a good thing. So then, on Friday, October 17th, I along with some of my colleagues and staff attended the Center Stage Gala. It was at the Palm Springs Air Museum. It was put on by the, the Palm Springs LGBT Center, and it was a major fundraiser for them. So it's always good to be able to see some of these same faces outside of the city business. The next day on Saturday, I did attend a demonstration with about 3,000 of my colleagues or friends, I guess you would say, acquaintances, out here in front of City Hall. We don't like to get too political, but it's always good to see people out exercising their democracy and their right to demonstrate. And it was great. It was peaceful. Thanks to the Police Department for all their work in helping prep and to, and to make sure everyone was following the rules. It's always, it's, it's nice that people feel safe when they're doing what they would like to do here in Cathedral City in a lawful way. Later that day, I did attend a fundraiser for the Palm Springs Hot Rodeo. It was called Caftan Cowpokes. I wanna thank Ari Knox. He invited me to that. It was their royalty competition, so that was very interesting. I was glad to be able to attend. And then last Tuesday, I did attend a reception for the International Gay and Lesbian Travel Association. They are in Palm Springs. It's a large, very large association. I was waiting in line at the door, spoke to somebody from Greece, went inside, stood in line, talked to two people that live in Guadalajara. So it was, and then went out to the table, and there was a man named Paolo from Italy that was arranged travel there. So it really is an international reception. I was happy to be able to talk a little bit about Cathedral City. Of course, last couple weeks also spoke with other residents, other people that are having, doing business with the city, interacted with staff. I did have the opportunity to volunteer at a couple of local charities at some of their events, but I won't bore you with that. As already mentioned, I, I wanna reiterate, if you have a dog and you like to dress up, or you just like to see dogs that are dressed up, make sure you come to the Panorama Dog Park on Saturday, starting at 9:00. We will be having the Halloween Dog Costume Contest. This is an annual event here in Cathedral City. And again, thanks to Antonio Beishu for being the spearhead on that and making sure that everything goes well, and to our sponsor Grocery Outlet will be sponsoring the event. So if you get a chance, come on out to that. And then the very next day on Sunday is the Halloween Spooktacular, a great family-friendly event with all of the kids and a kids costume contest, plus a lot of candy. So it's an opportunity for us to see the kids in their costume, a little preview before Halloween, which is on, on the, the Friday following. But this is a good chance for the kids to show up their costumes and get a little candy and get some recognition. So just wanna point out and let everybody know, our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 12th. That's our only scheduled meeting so far in November. So if you haven't got your fill of city council by the time you're done today, we'll be back on November 12th. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all so very much. And if you'll just be patient, I just have a little bit. So last week, I also was in Long Beach with my, my coworkers here at the League. We go every year, or pretty much every year. I think this is my fifth year going. And I thought it was the best. I thought it's the best we've had so far. I went to 10 workshops and, and listened to three speakers that were brought in for the conference. As soon as we returned, I represented you on SEVAG, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, where we talked about road improvements and free trees for planting. These seem to be top priority. On the 16th, I met the coordinator for this year's Fields of Value, Val, Value, well, it is a good value, but it's Fields of Valor at the Air Museum. This is looking like it's really gonna be one of our best. When it opens up on the 8th, there's a breakfast at 8:00. At 9:00, they have a ceremony. At 10:00, they put out the flags. And that takes quite some time, and they could certainly use your volunteer hands if you're available to do that. I believe about 9:00 a.m. each day is, is where that begins. And then on Saturday, the 18th, as, as Mayor Pro Tim mentioned, there was a rally in, well, not just in downtown Cathedral City, but across the nation. And I was in the Palm Springs portion of that. We had about 5,000, 5,000 people, I guess they said, maybe seven, somewhere in there. And Mayor DeHart and I gave speeches about the value of democracy and the threats of dictatorship. Last night, Senator Rosalesio Ochaboe, what was it? Oh, Ochaboe spoke at the Senior Center and addressed many topics, but she's really passionate about homelessness and lowering the cost of housing. This morning, I represented us at Sunline Transit, and I will be going on Sunday, I guess it is. I leave for Portland, Oregon for four days. Super fun side note for me, born and raised in Portland, so I'm taking all of these foreigners from Cathedral City up to Portland, and they have no idea what it's like. I mean, they're like so excited. And they were telling me all about this, this neighborhood called Selwood, which is the neighborhood both of my grandparents lived in, so spent many a years there. And they said, "And you know, there used to be a trolley." And I said, "That's the trolley my mother rode to high school on." And then somewhere along the way, they took up the little trolley bars and they paved the roads. But when they did that, they took that trolley, first trolley in, in all of Oregon, maybe, maybe internationally, I have no idea, but the first trolley, and they gave it to a brand-new company that was opening right then in a warehouse in downtown Portland called the Old Spaghetti Factory. So that was the very beginning. So I'm really looking forward to having that nostalgic time. So that was Sunline, and then I represented us at the, and I guess that was it. That's what I was talking about. I represented us at the SEVAG meeting, and I, they talked to me today, and I'm gonna be working on a project with them, and I'll be excited to report out and tell you all about it in the near future. So for that, I think I have concluded my comments. Thank you. So, City Clerk, can you read the consent agenda items for us, please?
Yes, Mayor. Item 3A is to waive full reading of ordinances on the agenda. Item 3B is to receive and file the Commissioner Committee Member Attendance Record. Item 3C is the approval of the October 6, 2025 Special City Council Meeting Minutes. Item 3D is to receive and file the check demand for September 2025. Item 3E is to adopt a resolution establishing campaign contribution limits for 2025. Item 3F is a second reading of an ordinance amending chapters 3.48, 5.88, 9.108, and 13.240, and Sections 9.30, .030 of the Cathedral City Municipal Code to update the cannabis tax, cannabis licensing, and zoning regulations and enforcement provisions. Item 3G is to accept the California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program grant in the amount of $55,000. Item 3H is to approve the resolution authorized interim city manager to accept the ABC-OTS Local Enforcement Grant Award and approved participation in the program for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. Item 3I is to adopt a resolution supporting the issuance of an ABC Liquor License for Eagle Cathedral City Limited. Item 3J is to adopt a resolution, to adopt by resolution an amendment to the city's master schedule of user and regulatory fees, a fee for the review of Cannabis Odor Control Plan and annual certification of a Cannabis Odor Control Plan. Item 3K is to adopt a resolution establishing an administrative fine schedule for the violations of the Cathedral City Municipal Code that exceed the default of the Cathedral City Municipal Code that exceed the default fine established in section Item 3L is to adopt a resolution designating the city manager as the review authority for determinations for public convenience and necessity related to the issuance of ABC liquor licenses. And that concludes the consent agenda. And now, Mayor, we do have quite a few comments for the record. I did receive a few to be entered into the record, so if it's okay, I'd like to read those first, and then I'll call on the members of the public that are here.
Thank you.
So all of these comments were received for the record, provided to the members of the city council, and made available for public inspection at the entrance. So for item 3E, Sunshine Herrera expressed her opposition. For item 3F, Sunshine Herrera expressed her concern related to the ordinance. Janet Ream expressed her concern related to the C4 facility. For item 3J, Sunshine Herrera expressed her opposition. For item 3L, Sunshine Herrera expressed her concern related to the resolution. And now I'd like to go to item 3F, and our first speaker is going to be Mary Ellen Muir. Would you please make your way to the lectern?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Mayor and the city council appreciate all the work that you do. I just had a couple of things. First, I wanted to read Andrew Feierstein. He had said, should we receive a complaint about cannabis odor, we're giving a business an opportunity to correct the issue before we get into enforcement, and we certainly want to support these businesses in that sense. So I think he also should be supporting the citizens. A lot of us have been away for the summer, we've come back, we still have that odor. Secondly, David Bernard in the last meeting, and I quote, "I think that the things that are concerning are some recent additions to the ordinance that are somewhat vague and provide an opportunity for people that are somewhat aggressive to the business." I'd like to know exactly what he's talking about, or if you're aware of any aggressiveness, because we have been totally peaceful and just voiced our opinion that we cannot live with that odor, and we need some action to be taken, other than saying, oh, we're monitoring, we're monitoring, we're monitoring, and things haven't changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
One other thing, thank you for doing the flags in Cathedral City for Veterans Day.
Thanks. Wait till you see Fields of Valor.
Mayor Ross, Mayor Ross, my timer is not working. I'll go ahead and keep time and let you know when it's three minutes.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Larry Reed.
Good evening. My name is Larry Reed. I reside at 69411 Ramon Road, Lot 450 in Cathedral City. My wife and I have been wintering in Cathedral City since 2014. In 2017, we purchased property in Cathedral City at the Outdoor Resort. We spend five to five and a half months here every year. In 2024, last year, I began to have vivid violent nightmares, so violent and vivid it caused me to physically act out these nightmares. It was frightening. I've never had such violent nightmares ever before. After returning to Oregon last spring, I visited my doctor for help. There has been no physical or emotional trauma in my life to have caused these nightmares to occur. Further, it was ruled out that there is no physical cause nor stress or anxiety in my life to cause such nightmares. My doctor prescribed medication which seemed to help, but made me feel terrible. By late June, my nightmares stopped, and I was off my medication before the end of July. We returned to Cathedral City October 14th. The evening of the 17th, the chemical smell from the cannabis drug factory facility was extremely strong. That night, I again had a violent vivid nightmare, one that I hadn't had for over four months. It was at this point I began to wonder, is there a connection between me breathing in the cannabis chemicals being caused, being the cause of my nightmares? If I didn't, it didn't take me very long to find some information that suggests that the chemicals being emitted from cannabis drug factories could cause nightmares to some people, but states more studies, nothing definitive, but more studies are needed. I realize this possible effect of cannabis drug factory chemicals discharge is only anecdotal, however, it does add to the growing evidence that this cannabis chemical discharge, these odors, has reduced the quality of life in Cathedral City. The city of Cathedral City, by authorizing the construction of the cannabis drug facility, has done so without adequately researching its effects. One, whether it's actually or even possible to eliminate their chemical odor discharge, and two, there's been a failure to research the physical and psychological effects of such chemicals on the human body, the human brain. I'm here to encourage the city council to order the closing of the Ramon Cannabis Drug Manufacturing Facility under the authority of its current CUP Conditional Use Permit. In doing so, help restore the quality of life back to this area of Cathedral City. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Roger Lautu.
Good evening, Mr. Lautu.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, my name is Roger Lautu. I'm the Facility Operation and Technical Support Specialist at C4 Industry, 69375 Ramon Road, adjacent to the facility that this gentleman was just referring to. I come before you after about four weeks of speaking last time to share my thoughts about some of the things we're dealing with. We're dealing with the best odor control that we can offer in a facility such as ours. As you know, it's the largest in California, unmitigated by anyone or any facility that comes close to that. We implement and employ several odor control systems, including the highest-quality carbon filters throughout the entire facility. We know that there could be some odor that may be emitted, but for the time being, and I would say for the future, we focus on having zero odor control. I think that's part of the ordinance that you all have enforced. I'd like to share some things with you very briefly that...
And I would ask you just to take a half a step forward, just so we can all hear you well.
Oh, certainly.
Just into the microphone.
I wanted to share a few things. So I believe you mentioned something about the College of the Desert was in earlier. So we are actually going through a program, through the College of the Desert, the Six Sigma Program. Have you heard of the Six Sigma Program? So it's an educational college-level program. We're actually using Six Sigma and odor control as part of our training and development. We're implementing methods and methodologies and technologies to actually present, produce and present for the future processes that we are going to install, employ, and make certain that we provide the best, best possible odor control for our facility. I'd like to also add to this that we are concurrently contributing roughly 5%, equalling, equating to $4 million of the city's overall tax base, and we further support the city in the number that could grow up to $7 million in the next few years. That reflects an infusion of roughly $40 million through employment taxes and local spending within the next two years. Now, we are full-time residents, as well as full-time operators at that facility, which means that 365 days a year, our businesses that are local get services, we have consumer advocacy, we offer things to our communities such as literacy training programs, we offer after-school summer programs for disadvantaged youth, and creating new opportunities through STEM and skilled trade education. We hope that the city, excuse me, we hope that the city council, the mayor, and all of those that have a discerning impact on our future here at Cathedral City understands and appreciates that our efforts are significant, not only financially, but through all the other efforts that we make.
Thank you, sir. That's your three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
The next speaker is Scott R. If you could state your full name for the record.
Scott Rusick. Good evening.
Rusick?
Rusick.
Rusick. Good evening, Mr. Rusick.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Team Cat City. My name is Scott Rusick, as we've covered. I am the president of the Coachella Valley Cannabis Alliance Network, CB Can. CB Can's mission is to be a reasonable and productive voice for its members in the Coachella Valley, as well as the state of California. We were contacted by Mr. Feierstein about six months ago regarding the ordinance at hand. And although CB Can seeks to be a productive voice for the cannabis community, due to the nature and severity of the causation here, we've solely focused on the impact to our members directly, which comprise testing labs and dispensaries with lounges. It's important to note that not one of CB Can's members has received an odor complaint. To the best of my, to best of my knowledge, no dispensary, dispensary with lounge, testing lab, or distribution company has received an odor complaint. This ordinance has been created due to the odor issues with cultivators. Unfortunately, labs, dispensary, lounges, and distros have been caught up in the tuna net, not unlike dolphins, and we all like dolphins. As a result, another layer of administration oversight and fees have been created and imposed upon those businesses, despite the fact that they have done nothing wrong. CB Can orchestrated tours of dispensary, two dispensaries and lounges, as well as one lab with Mr. Feierstein and his team, so that they could see, touch, feel, and get to know the business owners themselves, and we really appreciate their time in that regard. Without question, Mr. Feierstein and his team have worked closely with CB Can to dramatically reduce administrative fees, and such actions by the city are greatly appreciated. We hope that this is another step in the direction with the city and the cannabis community working together to address the needs of the city, together with the needs of cannabis business owners. And we sincerely tip our hat to Andrew and his team, as well as the city. Having said this, CB Can respectfully requests this ordinance to be modified so as not to include dispensaries, dispensaries and lounges, testing labs, and distro businesses. If this is not possible, we respectfully request the council to consider revisiting this request about a year down the road, and if no legitimate complaints are filed with these type, in connection with these type of businesses, that the ordinance be so modified so that these businesses, business types are excluded. Again, we appreciate the challenges faced by the city. This is indeed a sticky wicket, and I'm empathetic. We very much appreciate the initial efforts to address this challenge, and CB Can remains an asset to be called upon anytime by the city. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Rusick.
The next speaker is David Bernard.
Good evening, Mr. Bernard.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members and city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you here tonight. Just wanted to touch on a few things. There has been some opinion recently that we are not making progress on the odor control issues. There has been significant improvements. We have had numerous people that are not related to the business, visiting the property, doing tours, you know, doing interviews, city staff, and, you know, there has been a consensus that the odor has been significantly reduced. With that said, we are aware that there are still issues. We do have additional filtration systems that are under plan check now with the building department. We expect to have those installed and operational within the next four weeks. You know, to address some of the other comments regarding monitoring, I think it's important that there is a little context there, that we took the initiative to implement a monitoring system that cost us roughly around $100,000 annually, and we needed that data feedback for us to operate effectively. The reason that that monitoring system was installed was due to a lack of information coming in around the time of odor complaints and what operational conditions were happening during those events. So, you know, there's a multi-pronged approach to what we're doing. Roger mentioned earlier that we're engaging, you know, third-party specialists for process improvement, for training of staff. We have weekly meetings with every employee to talk about system improvement and, again, you know, areas that maybe we were not accounting for. So with that said, you know, the reporting systems have added a lot of value to our day-to-day operation. I personally review every odor complaint. We do take the issue seriously, and, you know, we do acknowledge that there has been some level of impact on the local community, and, you know, we apologize for that. We apologize for the burden that that has put on the city. And, you know, again, I think it's important that we keep in mind that there has to be some level of collaboration, which I think we've worked towards, and I think we're at that point now. And I do appreciate, you know, the ordinance and the clarity in the last meeting to, you know, kind of elaborate on what the city's approach is, and I'd like to thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
The next speaker is Jose Max.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to hear his name.
Jose Max?
Good evening, Mr. Max.
Good evening, Mayor, councils. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Again, I was here the last, for the last meeting, had the pleasure of addressing the council. And again, I want to reiterate that I am here on behalf of myself and my coworkers. Again, most of the people that work at C4 are working-class people. And I remember mentioning the last time that every time that there is conflict, like the one that we are currently facing, it's always the working-class people that pay the price. There's no question about that. If we look at what's going on around in the country, it seems like we always have to be with our guard up, and it really does place a great burden on our families. And I understand, we understand, I think that, I can speak for my coworkers, that we want to respect the neighbors, we want to do everything we can so that we can coexist. And I think that finding that middle ground is where we have to be at, without going too far left, too far right, or I believe that asking to shut us down is definitely not something that we want. We depend on that job that work at C4 Industry. As I mentioned the last time, it's really hard to find a good-paying job, especially here in Cathedral City. So I would like for the council to please consider, again, that the situation that our families are in if we were to lose that job. It's about 300 people that work there, so you cannot add that up. My wife is here with me tonight, and I brought her here because I want her to be a part of it, too, to see what we have to face in order to stay at C4, employed at C4. I think that we were talking about the homeless situation the last time, and celebrating, and I think that we live here full-time, all year round. And I really think that the people that are complaining, we understand their complaints, but they have to understand as well that we do have to make a living. And C4 is doing everything they can to mitigate the odor. I work there, so I am witness of that. Every day, that's our priority, to make sure that the odor doesn't bother the neighbors. And that's our commitment 100%. And that's what we'll continue to do. I don't think that it's going to be 0%, but we will get pretty close. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Max.
Mayor, that is all the request-to-speak forms that I have. Are there any other members that would like to speak on items? Okay, come forward. And sir, if you would state your name for the record and which item you will be speaking
My name is Caleb Hayhoe, and I'll be speaking on the cannabis ordinance. Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Caleb. I'm the cultivation manager at C4. I wanted to go over a couple statistics with everyone here. Part of my job, just some background, I managed the farm originally. Now I'm working more in software development and operations management. I'm originally from Michigan, and my background and my degree is in biochemistry and molecular We have been taking data on all of the odor complaints. This is measured in VOC, volatile organic compounds, basically compounds that can cause scent, okay? I'm going to go through a couple of numbers. Number one, 4,000, that's the... Number one, 4,000, that's the total number of plant species that have the same VOCs that cannabis produces. So if somebody is having nightmares because of cannabis, they'll also be having nightmares because of basically every other plant that has a smell in it. The average VOC during complaints about our facility is 28.2 parts per billion. That means in a unit of air, a billion air molecules, 28.2 of them are compounds that cause cannabis odor. The average human detection for these odors is 40 parts per billion. And I will add again that there are other species that cause these VOCs, so there's no direct evidence that the VOCs that are being measured at our facility are from actual cannabis plants. They could be from tamarind trees, which grow all around our property and other sites. The total number of complaints that we received in September was 30, 73% of which came from five individuals, and actually, 1/3 of which came from only one single individual. The number of salaried employees that we have at C4 is 15. The minimum salary in California is $68,640. The Cathedral City median income right now is $33,397. Our minimum wage at C4 is $18 an hour, which is equivalent to $36,000 a year, not including overtime, which we do pay a lot of. We currently have three ag scientists, including myself, one with a PhD, two with bachelors. We have two CPAs, one with a master, and we have one full-time software engineer. And as you know, the valley here is not exactly Silicon Valley, so having a software engineer employed is a big deal. $40 million is the approximate economic benefit that we could be bringing to the city. The total number of votes in the 2024 Cathedral City City Council election was about 2,000. The total number of registered voters is about 18,000. About 52% of voters in 2016, or about 9,000 voters in Cathedral City, approved cannabis legalization. 20% is the percentage of registered voters required to recall a city council member, which is approximately 3,500 people.
Thank you, sir, that is your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on the agenda, consent agenda items? I see no more, Mayor.
Thank you so very much. Thank you all for sharing your feelings.
Next, we're moving on to a public hearing. It's the adoption-
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I forgot we'd finished the consent agenda altogether.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim Gregory and a second by Councilmember Gutierrez. Please vote. And motion carries. All eyes.
Thank you so much. So we are back to the adoption of the 2025 California Building Standards and Fire Codes. This is being presented by our fire chief, Michael Contreras. Sir?
Actually, Mayor, this is going to be presented by Jeremy from our building department. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah, we'll wait till the room clears out.
I'm great, thank you. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
So, thank you, Mayor. This item is going to be presented by Jeremy Fry, our building official, and I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor.
We've got one more round of people going, so.
Oh, you don't want to listen.
Nothing personal.
Jeremy, was it something you said?
Apparently. Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, council, my name is Jeremy Fry, chief building official for the Community Economic Development Department. This evening, what you have in front of you is a brief synopsis, or snapshot at least, of our adoption of the 2025 Building and Standards Codes. Every few years, the state of California updates and publishes the Building and Standard Codes. It provides a uniform minimum standards for construction, fire, safety, and building design throughout the state. Cities are required to adopt the most recent edition of the Building Standards. The codes are released July 1 of this year and go into effect January 1 of 2026. Cities are authorized to enact amendments that are more restrictive than state provisions when supported by findings, modifications are necessary due to climatic, topographic, geologic, or any of those types of conditions that could have an effect on the model codes. Recent changes in state law, free state and local building code updates that apply to residential units, whether it's single-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, any type of dwelling unit that you can think of that resides in Cathedral City. Now, a little background on that, the California Health and Safety Code affords us as local government to adopt the Building Code. Then it also allows us to adopt local amendments so we can adopt a more strict code, whether it's, you know, again, topographic, climatic, or geological. The proposed ordinance adopts the 2025 California Building Standards with local amendments, and the local amendments conform to the authorizations granted by the state. So, in a nutshell, what we do is we take the model codes that they provide us, and then we adopt them as a local ordinance. We can put our own, we can make changes to it as long as it's more strict. It cannot make it more, less strict, if that makes sense. Some of the significant changes, or at least updates, that we have in the Building Code, what we did is we updated security and site cleanliness standards for any job site, really, for new construction. We're also going to have an update in Section 8.04.020 of the Building Code, modifying the wall and the fence height. It is not in this ordinance, nor is it in the exhibit we gave you. We're actually updating it in the second reading. We did receive some feedback on those items themselves. I'll touch a little bit more on that in Slide 7. In the residential code, we updated code sections that set permit requirements for walls exceeding another specific, specified height as well. So the Building Code and the Residential Code will both be consistent with each other. So I'll touch both of them on Slide 7. The Fire Code significant changes is increased fire apparatus turning radius standards, and that's a local amendment as well. We have a fire marshal here, too, to support that. On the findings, in the California Health and Safety Code, again, this is a little redundant, but the proposed additions and amendments that provide more stringent life, safety, and fire protection systems, the council must make the findings supporting the additions and amendments that are necessary due to, again, the climatic, geological, or topographic The findings are outlined in the staff report and are incorporated in the ordinance, along with Appendix B, which is what you have in front of you as well. And the recommendation on the subject is of 804.020 amendments, Paragraph 1 and 2, existing Section A, and this was Slide 7 that I was speaking on earlier. Paragraph 1 for permit exemption, for fences, permit exemption, excuse me, for fences and walls under three feet, the recommendation is going to increase that height exemption to 42 inches. A little background on that, the reason being is that will actually make us more consistent with our local zoning codes, okay? It also, it kind of relieves the burden on our residents and the public. Let's say if they want to build a three-foot wall, it does not require a permit. 42 inches and above is when the permit will kick in. The next bullet, existing Section A, Paragraph 2, deleting exemptions of retaining walls not over four feet in height. So currently, right now, for about the past 18 years, possibly longer than that, the exemption we put on that, we actually deleted it, so it requires a permit for all retaining walls, no matter the height. We're actually referring back to the model code and adopting that as-is, so anything over four feet is going to require a permit, which is, it's not less strict, we're just adopting the code as-is, which is completely compliant with the state standards. So we're recommending, omitting that section as entirely, and then we'll just observe the actual California Building Code as-is, so any wall, retaining wall, four feet or higher, taller, will require a permit.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So here it says recommend increasing height exemptions to 42 inches. Is that right?
Correct. That is correct.
And that's what you, okay, thank you very much.
Correct. You're welcome. And last slide, recommendation to introduce the first reading of the attached ordinance to adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code and certain specified appendices thereof, including local amendments, which is what you have in your ordinance, and instruct staff to file the adopted ordinance with the California Building Standards Commission following the second readings, but at least 30 days before the effective date of the codes, which will be January 1 of 2026. And that concludes my presentation. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have questions? Mayor Protim.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation and for all your work on this, and thank you for addressing the issue about the wall height. I do also note in here that there, it discusses roofing materials, and very appropriately, in my opinion, and I'm sure we'll make the finding, that because of our weather, we need to have very fire-resistant roofing materials, but it seems to specify that they have to be clay or concrete roofing tiles. And I know there are other roofing materials that are commonly seen, especially even up in the mountainous areas, those kind of things that are known to be fire-resistant, maybe even more fire-resistant than concrete or clay roofing tiles. Is there some reason why the language isn't just restricted to certain fire-resistant materials, or that it actually calls for the concrete or clay tiles?
So, to address that directly, there's kind of two angles on that. The actual requirement for the clay tile roofing also has an angle from the planning or the zoning code for aesthetics. From the building side, there are probably four to five different materials that are what's called Class A. It's non-combustible, so you're looking at, you can look at clay tiles, you can look at a metal, a standing seam roof, anything concrete material, certain types of, other type of clay or concrete. So from the building and safety side, that's what that is. I don't have a direct answer, or at least the code section for the zoning code on why that is, but I know that's been in there for quite a while. I can get an answer for you that, from at least the planning or zoning side, we can address that.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, and we even have buildings that have flat roofs.
Sure.
So I don't know how this section applies to there, because they, a lot of them have some kind of rolled material, those type of roofs.
Let me dig a little bit more into that, Mayor Protim, and I believe, I don't want to, I don't want to comment incorrectly on this, but I believe it's on residential is where the actual, the clay tile roofs come in.
Well, but they're residential. I can think in my own neighborhood, there were, there are some residential recently built.
Sure.
In fact, I remember I asked because they didn't necessarily fit with the basic theme of the other houses, and one of the main things being that they had clay and concrete tiles, but there were a number built, and I was told that there were no design standards as, you know, that would prohibit a more modern building, flat-roof building, from being built. And I can think of several examples. So, yeah, if you could clarify, and if there needs to be a modification for second reading, you know, to make it maybe, I think we want to, it would please be my desire, and I want to speak for the whole council, that we would keep in fire-resistant materials that are appropriate, but if just calling out specifically clay or concrete tiles isn't what we're doing, first of all, or isn't necessary, it would seem like it would make sense to offer a little more flexibility.
Okay, just so I understand, just making sure you want to broaden the scope of the actual, the Class A-type roof, is what it is. So instead of just clay tile, possibly giving other options for buildings?
Yes, unless there's some reason why it has to be clay or concrete tiles, but if there are other fires, materials that are as fire-resistant or more fire-resistant, it would, it would seem like that that would be an unnecessary restriction.
Understood. I will look into that.
All right, and my other, my last question is, there are provisions here that talk about sky lanterns. Can you please describe what a sky lantern is, and maybe what the issues are?
I would be gladly happy to hand this one over to our fire marshal.
Hello. Good evening, I'm Lynn Piveroff, the fire marshal, and I brought pictures. Seen them over water before, but I've never seen them over land. So basically, they're a hot air balloon without any monitoring. So there's a candle underneath, and there's usually rice paper or tissue paper over a metal frame, and then you light the metal, the candle, and it goes in the air. And then where it lands is no one's call. It'll come down eventually, but it might hit a tree or a person on the way down. The Fire Code doesn't permit them at all. So our amendment does state they can go through the fire chief in writing, too, but I don't believe he's ever gotten a request, and I'm sure he would deny it.
Okay, I wasn't 100% sure what they were, but I have-
They're sometimes called Chinese lanterns or wishing lanterns.
And mostly where I've seen these are like large bodies of water associated with them, that type of a thing. But it certainly seems to make sense here without having large bodies of water and having winds, as we do so often, that it would be a bad idea. So thank you so much for the finding. Thank you. All right, that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes your presentation. Back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have to apologize, I jumped right over the city manager's report. Is there something that you would like to share?
I do not have a report on the agenda, Mayor.
It was just a staff report for this particular item.
That was Jeremy's presentation, sorry. It was during the, during the people coming in and out that-
You were on the list, and I just made a remark, not because you were not seeing us.
I am not hurt. Jeremy had it, had us covered.
Right, thank you so very much.
You know, I did, I did have one question I just thought of. Is a chim- is a chimenea considered an open? I just thought of it as, a neighbor had called me, that he thought somebody else was, had a chimenea, you know, those clay, it's a clay thing, and I don't know if it was, that's considered an open flame?
So, if, if you're looking at it from like a freestanding-
Right.
-you know, chimney in your backyard-
Right.
-it's considered an appliance. So from that aspect, no, it is not an open flame.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on that? Good? Okay.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Any additional questions, Counsel? Great. So at this time, I will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Mayor Ross, I did not receive any request-to-speak forms. If you're a member of the public and you wish to comment on this item, please raise your hand. I see none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
Well, I think to approve the allegations that the fire rate was 0.20. Increasing the height exemption for fences and walls and following the model code for retaining walls.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protim Gregory and a second by Councilmember Lamb. Please vote.
Before you vote, Counsel, could I actually have you conclude in the motions all three items? There's three items that they want, and we specifically need to adopt the findings that are referenced in Option 1.
I can't really hear you.
So my motion includes to adopt the findings of no possibility of significant effect according to SEQA, and to introduce this ordinance at their first reading, and to instruct staff to file the adopted resolution and ordinance with the California Building Standards Commission and including the modifications specified.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Please vote.
And motion carries. All eyes.
Thank you.
And now, Mayor, I need to read the title of the ordinance. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cathedral City, repelling chapters eight point zero two, eight point zero four, eight point zero eight, eight point one zero, eight point one two, eight point one four, eight point one eight, and eight point two zero of Title Eight of the Cathedral City Municipal Code, adopting new chapters eight point zero two, eight point zero four, eight point one two, eight point one four, eight point one eight, and eight point two zero, thereby adopting the twenty twenty-five California Building Standards Code and certain specified dependencies thereof, including local amendments and replacing and replacing the section eight point five zero point zero three zero A to require verification of a public sewer connection prior to the issuance of a building permit for the new construction and finding the ordinance exempt from SEQA.
Thank you very much. Our next item is regulations for the operation of food trucks within Cathedral City.
Mayor, Justin Gardner from our Code Enforcement Department is going to be making this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, counsel. I'm going to apologize in advance. I seem to have this tickle I can't get rid of. So if I go into a coughing fit, I'm sorry. My name is Justin Gardner. I am the code manager. And today I'd like to bring back for the adoption of the food truck pilot program that we have previously discussed. Little background again, staff did present a draft to council of eighteen month pilot program that's going to allow a limited number of permitted food trucks to operate on specific private property. That would be a limit of ten permits available in that eighteen month program. The permits would each be only active for twelve. We have a little bit of wiggle room for folks to learn about the program and then apply and go through that permitting process and specific private property that still excludes any type of residential area. Staff did receive feedback both from the council as well as the community and did incorporate those items and concerns into the draft into the proposed pilot program. Some of the feedback that was received was to reduce the distance of requirements to permitted restrooms from two hundred feet down to one hundred and fifty feet. That has been reflected in the draft ordinance. Also add requirements for proof of sales tax licensing during the permitting process. We've reached out to our finance department to gain more knowledge of that requirement and have now put that into the permitting process also in the ordinance. And then also, we after receiving feedback from the community and potential food truck businesses, decided to reduce the buffer zone from established eating and drinking facilities from seven hundred and fifty feet down to five hundred feet, as this helped us provide both opportunity as well as maintain protection for those established eating and drinking facilities. We did include several maps into the staff report that reflected the seven hundred and fifty feet, five hundred feet, and then down to two hundred and fifty feet, I believe, for your review. If it is the council's desire, we can bring this back for amendment. Ultimately, the recommendation here is for council to adopt the uncodified ordinance and for us to launch this pilot program for that period of eighteen months to allow code staff to review the impacts from it, the pros and cons, before considering any other adjustments or permanent changes to the Cathedral City Municipal Code, specifically chapters, chapter five point eight two. I just wanted to caveat on this. This pilot program does not replace the current code. Rather, it does enhance it. It's this plus that. And here also, with the tax license requirements, they will be required to display those as well as their permits and their health code from the County of Riverside. With that, I open it up for any questions from council.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? Please. Councilmember Carnaval.
My question would be on the time. Most of these food trucks are more lunch or dinner. You know, nine o'clock is kind of early. So I was thinking, you know, lunches probably start maybe closer to ten o'clock. I was wondering if the council wanted to discuss the hours. And ten o'clock is kind of late. Dinner hours, like from five to seven, five to eight. So if we could shorten these to like ten to, excuse me, ten to nine, nine o'clock, they're going to have to clean up, maybe bring in their chairs, take out the garbage, clean up around. If they're there, if they stop selling at ten, you know, they might be there till ten thirty and it's still a bit late. So I was wondering if we could adjust the hours to maybe shut it at nine, if possible, if that's available for discussion.
Well, I know I'm in bed by then, but I believe there's a large segment of the population that's still somewhat active and maybe goes out to games and those kind of things. I'm just thinking where I have seen them. The few times I do have been out that late, it's usually because I went to an event or something and I could see them wanting wanting to stop by or have some availability after hours. And again, the accompanying business would have to be open that late, too. So I think it would be very, it wouldn't be a lot that you would have. So I think as part of the experiment, I want to I personally feel we should be, without being ridiculous, we should be somewhat broad. And then when it comes back, then we can see or if we can, we don't even have to wait if we see something's a potential problem. But yeah, I wasn't looking at I saw those hours, too. But I and I thought some of the same thing, that it wouldn't be something I would see. But I did I realized it would probably be very limited because they have to be the business with the bathroom, the restroom has to also be open at the same time.
That's a good point.
So it would it would it would be very rare, but there I could see. I would be interested to see in this experiment if anybody actually did that. And then.
It is an experiment, and I don't have a problem giving leadway to food trucks. Obviously, if they're not making any money from nine to ten, they're firing that baby up and they're out of there. So we can give them the leadway. I just, you know, being in the restaurant business, you know, for many, many years, my style of restaurant, you know, come nine o'clock, it's done. Even eight thirty, it's kind of winds down. But I could understand if there's special events going on town, a lot of people out and about busy weekend, three day holiday or four day weekend. So I could understand that. So with that being said, Mayor Protim, you know, just give us a leadway. I'm sorry?
Yeah, for the experiment, I think maybe we should see if anybody does. And if so, if it causes any trouble or or if it's something that benefits the community because they have something available, maybe.
But you did say something interesting there. If if the establishment that has the restroom closes at eight, they got to they got to vacate at eight?
They'll either have to vacate or they'll have to show that they still have access to the bathroom, whether what kind of deal they make with that, a key or pad or however it is, they'd still have to provide that access.
The restroom has to be available.
Correct.
Anytime that it's open, it must be available.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Well, Justin, thank you for your presentation. And what I want to say, thank you for your hard work that you put into this regulation and looking into it. And also, thank you for listening to counsel as to what we have to say in putting this into this experimental ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Councilmember Lamb?
I was just going to weigh in about the time. I think I I agree with Mayor Protim Gregory that for this trial time, I say we'd be be more liberal in our ideas and times and see how it works. And then we can make adjustments as we go. Thanks.
And I just have a question because I don't recall this. Okay. How far away does the ba- is the bathroom allowed to be from the food truck to still be usable?
We reduced it from the first initial draft was two hundred feet and council's comment was to reduce that to one hundred and fifty, and we've implemented that.
So I've been trying to think about in Cathedral City, where would you go that you would there be a food truck and then you'd need to use the bathroom? We wouldn't be restaurants because they would have just fed everybody, right? So that's. So the only thing I could really come up with is like the Mary Pickford, you know, where you might come out from a movie and hit some food at a food truck and go back in and be able to use the restroom if you needed to. But I'd be interesting, it'd be interesting to me to hear from any of my fellow council members, some of the places they could imagine that we would need that.
Mayor, the if I made that requirement is also for the staff inside the food truck. So they have access to clean bathroom facilities while they're sitting there cooking and doing stuff.
Sure.
I have an example for this. There's the auto parts, right, Napa Auto Parts. If a food truck wants to establish somewhere around their, as long as they're not within the five hundred feet from Trilusa, but if they're a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet from within a hundred and fifty feet from Napa, Napa can just give them the key and say, look, this is the restroom. Your customers can use it anytime until ten o'clock that you're open. It's okay. But it has to be a business that has a restroom and there's not a restaurant within five hundred feet.
I could imagine a restaurant offering somebody else their key, but I hear you.
A business.
And you had something, Mayor Protim?
So I wanted to thank you for the couple of things, for the looking at the five hundred feet, because we do, again, in the same kind of vein, we want this to be an experiment. So we want there to be places that could try it. So the map is still pretty congested at five hundred feet, but I assume staff look at it a little more closely. And so do you feel that there are at least some reasonable places? Or is five hundred feet still making it impossible?
Five hundred feet can still be fairly restrictive. And we're open for the suggestion even to bump it down further. This was just kind of that median between the three options we presented, two fifty up to seven fifty, and we kind of just split the difference to five hundred to ensure those protections were there for the established eating and drinking facilities. You know, obviously, the smaller that radius, the more opportunity for the entrepreneurial food truck. But then there's going to be more competition with those established brick and mortars. But ultimately, whatever the the council would like, we can implement it.
Like the counselor just brought up an example of the Napa Auto Parts and saying if they were five hundred feet from Trilusa, unfortunately, they'd have to be five hundred feet from, well, Brunch one oh one and Chipotle or Farmer Boys when it gets in there. So they wouldn't be able to do it there. And so I'm a little concerned when I look at the five hundred feet map, even though it's better than the seven hundred feet map, is that we're going to do this experiment, but there aren't a lot of places where they're they can operate.
Right.
So so I don't know how much of an experiment it's going to be. So I didn't know if staff had looked at it and said, well, there's some reasonably good areas where they could establish, but.
At the current point, we have, I believe, five permitted food vending trucks in the city anyways. We're trying to encourage some type of engagement with the food trucks to these businesses. We'll reengage back with those permities, those ten that are available, and poll them throughout that eighteen month for that twelve month period that they hold the the permit and then bring those findings back to council. And at that point, we could also extend this pilot program out another set of time with less strict requirements, even more strict requirements. This doesn't have to be necessarily a solid for every decision today. It's just for us to data collect and come back to council in that eighteen months to let you know how it worked.
All right. Well, if you feel it's reasonable as a test, then, you know, we shall we shall let it go. I don't see any any of them here, you know, requesting more, at least not not yet in the public comments. So and I did appreciate, I just wanted to note, I did appreciate where you say you're not you're not restricting anything that exists today. It's a plus because I know there's been some talk in the in the community, even in the news media, that somehow we were now becoming much more restrictive than we have been, which I was surprised to see because my understanding was if somebody still wanted to operate under the old rules, they could. They didn't have to be part of the ten, you know, they could. But the old rules, you know, as you presented with statistics, had made it very difficult for people to legally operate. That was one of the reasons we wanted it to be more reasonable and try this experiment. So I appreciate those comments. And hopefully those that have maybe read this incorrectly are can realize or we could educate them that we're not being more restrictive by this test. The test has some definite restrictions. But if they wanted to operate under the old rules, that we're not telling them that they can't while this test is going on.
Correct. Hundred percent right. And then at the end of this, we're hoping to bring back a more refined overall five point eight two for the council's adoption so we can incorporate all kinds of new changes that hopefully will be best for everybody involved.
All right. Well, hopefully, if this goes forward, you make sure we get some interim feedback, too, you know, and maybe in our reports with the city manager or other other updates. Thank you.
So at this time, I open the public hearing. And are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Mayor, we did receive a comment. It was received for the record. It was provided to the members of the City Council and made available at the entrance for public inspection. Ari Knox expressed his concern related to the proposed ordinance. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment? And I see none.
Thank you so very much. Then following these public comments that we are lacking in, is there any additional comments from council?
Mayor, if we could please close the public hearing officially?
It said that we close the public hearing after we've asked each member if they'd like to speak.
For members of the public. So I think we're ready to close it.
All right. It says members from comments from council is what it says. Call on each member that would like to speak.
I apologize, Mayor.
We'll just say it. We're going to close the hearing. City Clerk, will you please read the title of the ordinance?
Need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got so excited there.
We need to vote.
I'll make the motion over.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Carnaval and a second by Mayor Protim Gregory. Please vote.
Let's try that again.
And motion carries. All eyes.
I'm ready to go. I'm sorry. Everything passed. Thank you.
And now I'll read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cathedral City, establishing a pilot program for food truck vendor permits on private property. Food truck pilot program.
Is that it?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
You were going like that. I thought you were still looking for something. So the next item is a legislative action for the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, assistance to firefighters grant. The recommendation is to accept an assistance to firefighters grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. We're being joined by
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, it's my pleasure to bring this to you tonight. Again, we were all here in August of two thousand twenty-three and, you know, have made a focus, the council's made a focus of emergency preparedness. And this was something that was unexpected. While we did apply for it, we had kind of written it off. And so what I'm going to bring you to you tonight is exactly what this grant does and how it helps ultimately the city, the residents, and the fire department. So if you go back to two thousand twenty-three and you look at the challenges that we had with Hurricane Hillary, it was not only moving water, it was hazardous material with the with the train derailment. Anna was rescuing people. And so, you know, the council has given the the fire department a lot of resources, but that was the specialty resources. Those are the resources that we had to wait and 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 sometimes kept people stranded. So with the city's staff and my team, we got together and and really threw a Hail Mary. And that's really what this grant was. We we said, if we could build anything we wanted, we wanted to create the most highly trained, highly proficient workforce, ready to go, what would it cost? And at the time, we submitted a grant of over a million dollars. And what FEMA came back was this. They awarded a nine hundred and sixty-five thousand grand dollar grant. They took a few dollars off and then we had to do the ten percent matching funds. So I start with this with the recommendation to accept the AFG specifically for fire department grants from from FEMA in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and sixty-three cents, and authorize eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents in local matching funds that will come from the fire department's current budget that the council approved earlier in the year for a total of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-four thousand. So I already talked a little bit about the background. We had put this together. We started in about July of last year. They're pretty small windows. We knew that there was going to have to be some matching funds. But like I said, this was, we built this in a custom. So what is everything that we need as Cathedral City to put our best foot forward? And so it's what we came in. It was a combination of training, safety, and in looking at the ways that we provide our services to the community and ultimately to strengthen our technical rescue in disaster. technical rescue and disaster readiness. Now, we do the SER, as Councilmember Lamb said, we do the Stop the Bleed, but this is that next level. This gives us the depth of resources and specialty training that we need. Ultimately, what does the, the community get? They get not only a heightened readiness from its firefighters, but we can look at floods, train derailments and hazmat incidents. So this would allow us, and I'll go over the list here in a second, but it will allow us to respond to all those to what they, what they call through the state is a type two response team. So that means you've got enough resources to isolate, identify, and in some cases deny entry if needed. It ultimately improves our response capabilities, expands our ability to protect our residents. And if you really look at it as percentage of workforce, it gives us the highest percentage of these technically trained workforce in the Coachella Valley and really only second in Riverside County. Here is the list of it and obviously the ones that say hazmat, those are for hazardous materials, but this is the list and it breaks up into three categories. One is hazmat, one is what we'll call technical rescue, which is ropes and rescuing people. And then the final one is swift water. And that's everything from what they call technicians to boat operations. So even if it's moving water, our people would still have the capabilities to respond to that. What this grant covers is for 24 firefighters to get all the training listed up on the screen. It covers all travel, all overtime, all lodging and anything to do with the costs of it. So the backfill, so if we, we send somebody up, they're supposed to be working, they go up, we're already covering their salary, but the person behind them to cover the city, will they go up there? It covers that also. And if you look at our current budget, the council did a great job of boosting our training budget. If you look at the amount that you boosted it to and you take the amount of training, it would take us somewhere between eight and 10 years to get this comparable amount of training and it would not be paying the overtime or the lodging. That would be additional money. So if you went dollar for dollar, we're talking about 15 years it would take to get our people trained up to this level if the city had to fund it. Right here, this is, this is kind of a collage of everything that they would be doing in some way, shape or form, whether it's the hazmat, you know, we, we were talking earlier in the week, we did a leadership academy for our BCS. And with Hurricane Hillary, the, the one with helping the, the lady into the pickup, that was standing water. But at that time, we had nobody, not one of our people that was trained in swift water of any type. And so as we know, sometimes there's washaways. We had people, and you can see the individuals in the bottom, that were waist and chest deep in mud. So one thing this training does is it, it gives them the knowledge and the background to anticipate and identify these hazardous areas before they deploy into them. From, from a regional standpoint, like I said, if you remember a couple of months ago, the council had to approve, we, we had a illegal grow house here in the city, we had a hazardous, we had a leaking substance that went down the street and we had to pay $45,000 to have the hazardous material team come out from Cal Fire from Temecula area. Okay? Well, that's the closest hazmat unit for anything that we have here. So if we have something, a tractor trailer tip over and it becomes a, a cloud of something, if we have a train derailment and it becomes something else, those resources are coming from Temecula. And so what this would allow us, like I said in the beginning, it's a type two team. So it, it would allow us to respond, get the, the needed resources, identify what it is, and then we would be used as a regional resource also. So if there was something in Beaumont or something in Coachella and that resource came, then we would fall into that mutual aid system that would allow us to contribute. But the first part of that is getting your people trained up to that level. Obviously it builds, you know, everybody knows here, we're sitting right on the fault line. It's, it's kind of, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And this allows us to have that specialty team here in our city that, to help our residents above and beyond what we currently have. Ultimately, it builds a stronger, safer Cathedral City, delivers eight to 10 years of training. It is an aggressive timeline, I will tell you that, and we've been working on schedules. Unfortunately, we've been trying to get in contact with FEMA, but nobody's home right now. So we still have some questions that we're trying to work through, but it would create multi, multidisciplined regional leader. We, we are it. We would be the leader in this area, establishes sustainable cost savings. And part of this that we've, we've built, if you remember a couple of years ago, I said we're getting state certified instructors. Well, now that we have they're at that level, guess what we'll be doing? And so the, the long-term cost and exposure to the city is actually going to be reduced because we're going to be able to do a lot of this in-house. If you break down our numbers, so I was sitting in the back, you know, really kind of looking at our workforce. And over the last three years since I've been here, we've hired 23 new firefighters. Okay? So that's three years or less that they have on the job. Some of them have none of this. So, so this is starting from square one. We have nine new promotees. So people that were maybe firefighters or engineers when I got here, and now they're captains and BCS. So they have to broaden their knowledge. So when you really look at our safety workforce, workforce, which is our firefighters, we're looking at two thirds of our firefighters that are new to their position or new to Cathedral City. So being able to get this training, the 24 positions that this grant would cover, would cover two thirds of our fire department getting up to that high level of training. Fiscal impact, I already covered this, but it's 800, the grant itself is 877,000, which masks, masks matching funds of 87,000 for a total combined grant amount of 965,474. I've already talked, it basically covers everything. They're going to cover food, lodging, we will end up, for travel, we'll use a staff car. But other than that, and what you've already budgeted in the fire department budget, there's no other fiscal impact. This does align with the city's strategic plan. Goal D, innovation and goal E, safety, strengthening the city's preparedness. So this, this is a bullseye in that goal E, hits it right in the middle, exactly what the council wanted and supports objectives D7 for community-based fire prevention and disaster readiness and training. Recommendation is to accept the FEMA grant for 877,703.63, approve a local match of 87,7737 and authorize the fire chief to execute all grant-related documents. Questions?
Thank you. Questions?
I do.
Ask number Gutierrez.
Yes, one second here. Good evening, Chief.
Sir.
Question number one. Okay. How long will the training be for each, each fireman?
So it's, it's a total of 16 classes for a total of 14 weeks. So if you were to line it up, it would be 14 weeks, non-stop. And so what we've come up with is a series, so because anytime you send somebody away, there still has to be people working. So what we've, the one question we have right now for FEMA is, and they've done this in the past, can we extend it past two years? Because to do seven weeks of training in a two-year period, it's aggressive, it really is. Now, we have some people that are saying, let's go. Like they're, they're, they're young, they're eager, they want to go. But, you know, summer vacations and that stuff, this would impact that. So the total number is 13 weeks.
Now, the covering firemen, they'll be, they'll be covering the one that is in training. They will be possibly in overtime, correct?
They will be overtime.
So the grant does cover those, that salary?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Now, do they have to be recertified every three, four years, six years?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's where we, we started two years ago to build, we call it cadre. So you have our regular firefighters, then you have our training, people that do training stuff, and then we have cadre, which cadre is, is within the department is the instructors. So we've been working on them becoming state certified instructors. So they've met all the requirements. Now, the next requirement is to take these classes. And so what we'll do is we'll have for each one of the classes, we'll have two or three people become state certified instructors. So when it comes time to renew, usually every two years, and, and our, what we call CE or continuing education, we're, we're able to do all that in-house. And we wouldn't have to, every two years go up, for instance, Chico is where the swift water rescue training is, we wouldn't have to go to Chico every two years.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's great. Great news. Now, that's my, that question. Now, the grant, does it cover, of course, when you are trained for hazmat, you have to, you, you need special equipment and also, I don't know what's special additional equipment you need, not just personal as a uniform, but also to take care of the issue. Does the grant also cover the equipment plus the uniforms?
It does not. So, so again, we would be looking for grants. When, when we originally did this, there was a thing called throughout the state, it was called the RTF, a regional task force. That was the intent. We wanted to become a regional task force, but then the state in the budget cuts got rid of the, the regional task force. One of the things that I feel pretty confident is because of where we're at and the Coachella Valley is isolated, that either through grants, I've had a few conversations, some donations, where I feel very confident, or we tie in with Cal Fire and their region, the regional approach and help others contribute to it. But it does not, our suits and all that kind of stuff, we would not be able to get.
So we would probably need suits and also maybe a trailer to host and?
Yep. We are, so the trailers we already have over at Fire Admin, we, we have one. And again, this isn't going to be a full, you know, 18-wheel hazmat incident. It's going to be a pickup with a trailer with the suits that we need along with our fire apparatus. We show up, we set up the perimeter and then we go in. We would, like I said, we, the main function of a type two team is to identify, so binoculars, isolate, so keep everybody out and deny entry and then work the problem from there.
And my last question is now, if approved by council, the total amount of $877,000, we do not get the lump sum once we, once we submit the approval of city council. We get that as we expand the money. So for instance, if four firefighters went for training for two weeks, they come back, the covering officers, the, the cost was this much, plus all the expenses for the training, we submit a bill for that amount and we get reimbursed until we meet or come up to the total amount of $965,000.
That is correct.
And we have two years to do that.
Yeah. And anything that we don't use, we got to give them back. And like I said, the one, one question I have, and I, and I've talked to other people, other fire chiefs, and if you get these, the main thing that FEMA wants is that the money's being, going towards what they intended it to. So if you're moving forward and you're, you're doing the things and let's say, hey, we just, we couldn't find the class, we need these additional classes. Everybody I've talked to said that in the past, they will give you an extension.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmembers?
So Councilmember Gutierrez hit on a lot of what I had, and I know part of it was equipment. And I heard you say, we're going to try to get grants or cost share. So, but what happens if that doesn't work out? Do you have the money in your budget?
I, so this is what I've looked at, worst case scenario. The short answer is I have some money. And because we are going to, with, with trying to get this initiative and get everybody trained, we're not going to be doing a whole lot of other training. So I still, based on, we're at about 112,000 is what you get, you gave me, and we're going to use half of the 87,000. So that gives me a ballpark, let's say 70,000 to 80,000. I priced out a trailer, I can get a, a big one for about 45,000, 50,000. Used is a little bit cheaper and then we start. So if I had to, to get it off the ground, I don't want to say anything here in open forum, but I've already had some conversations with some people in the area that would be interested in, in contributing to something like that.
I think, you know, at least for me, it's always happy when you can go out and find some grant money for something that we want, but it's like a lot all at once. And, you know, my concern is that, is, you know, that we could look at these different areas like hazmat, how it'd be good to have, like you said, where, you know, have a railroad here and other incidents with hazmat, cannabis incidents, those types of things, as you mentioned. Probably Cal Fire should have a closer hazmat team. So, you know, and part of the fun with hazmat, as you've said, is once you get it, it'll be used all over in this region. So you'll get called out to, you know, train, we say we train and it's from here to here, but you're going to get called out at least as first responder to a lot of train issues if, if one should occur, you know, anywhere in the region. That, you know, that's good in the sense that we do, do mutual aid and, you know, it's good to be able to be the one, the one that's closest and has first priority, but, you know, you have to be realistic and say, is that going to be distracting? Is that going to cause staffing issues? Do we get reimbursed if we get called out, those types of things? Or, and is there some, like you're saying, some way, since we would be doing preparations that some of our neighbors, including Cal Fire, wouldn't necessarily need to do for this region or this, you know, this area, are they going to recognize that and, and help us pay for getting prepared when we would also be helping them? Or are they just going to say, oh, good, you know, that rich city, Cathedral City is able to do this and?
No, I, I mean, I can tell you that, right? That's not how the master mutual aid system works, right? You, in order to be part of it, you have to have like resources. So that's why when they get, when they came to us, if, if they, we needed a fire engine, they gave us a fire engine, we give them a fire engine. It's, it's like for like resource. But if you don't have like for like, you don't get the deal, right? Which is why we got charged that $45,000 when they, they came in and spent the night at one of our, like I said, the illegal grow house.
So if we go, if we go to help them on an incident in their area?
And get billed, or we get to bill that.
We would bill them or?
Yes. So if we went to Beaumont and we went up there and we were there all night, we would be able to collect the same thing that they did.
Including at least equipment that was used up.
Correct. It's dollar for dollar.
And you would be seeking some of them, some type of agreement with some of them at least to be prepared or at least that's some potential?
I can tell you, they need, in the, in the chief's conversations, we needed this three years ago, right? That the chiefs and the county as a whole, because there used to be a hazmat team out here and then budget cuts, it got cut back. Then you get into EMD, you get into OES. Again, those are entities that have a vested interest in having their county, their state, the areas of their state protected. So the short answer is yes.
And I'm concentrating on the hazmat because I, I find that in my thinking to be a more likely and useful scenario, although all of them, as you pointed out, there are and we can, you know, we can look at, but, you know, and then you talk about swift water. That occasionally happens here and it's one of those things you have to be prepared for. The ropes and the utility extracations, I would think less, but still a possibility. So I'm not saying you wouldn't want to do it. So I guess that leads to a question though, it's a lot here. So are you going to be able to prioritize things that you think are most needed by us and regionally first? Or are you just going to go blah at all of it? And then hopefully we get, because if we don't get all the way through it or the funding isn't there, or there's some other issue, I think, at least for me, for council, we would hope that at least we, we got what we see as our primary need first and we didn't just try to do everything everywhere all at once and then ended up only with a little bit of everything, which isn't necessarily that helpful because you need to be able to put up teams.
Yep. And so here, if you ask me today, this is the plan. I've already scheduled, irregardless whether you approve this grant or not, we had already, because I, I believe that the greatest need for the residents is swift water, believe it or not, with the flash flood. That, if I look at over my three years, that is the greatest threat. The, the largest potential threat is the railroad, but due to the amount of, of training to get, that's a four-week But due to the amount of, of training to get, that's a four-week class minimum, and then times twenty-four people, that has a significant impact. So what my plan was, or is right now, is we are going to do Swiftwater first and, and get a team, be able to get a type-two team.
I was going to say, do you have to do all twenty-four at once? Or can you do?
No.
Not for a team?
You can do eight.
Okay, yeah.
And you can do it in chunks, but get as many on Swiftwater. And then I've already contacted the trainers. We would do, probably take a fall, so start in maybe a year from now. And we would do one week on, one week off, one week on, one week off. And we'd have to do that for two months. And in that, then we'd have a hazmat team. But it would be in-house. We'd do it like we did a few months ago, or last year at Fire Admin. We have the classroom. It would be very intensive. And then the, the last part of the year would be all the ropes and that type of stuff.
All right, well, that's good to hear, the prioritization, because, and there will be equipment costs come up, not just for like for hazmat, but others. Are you going to have to get a boat, or are you going to, some type of?
Have a boat.
Some type of?
Yeah. And again, I've had, I've only had one conversation, but OES, so they wanted to fund an RTF. Then there was the budget. But what, in my conversation, what happened was, the local government said, we want an RTF, right? And then, and when there's floods all throughout the state, these RTFs go out and help throughout the state, just like our fire engine does. What happened was, local government, so the small fire department says, we, said we couldn't do that. Because it, it took this, everybody would have to do about twenty-four people, and there are six different departments. That was going to be a huge lift, and the state was going to have to pay for it, right? And so they still have the need, they just don't want to front the money. So again, you can't write a check on it, but what I've been told is, if you have everything that's qualified, you, our chances are pretty good.
All right. So the other elephant in the room is that this grant has some interesting terms that are new to us here in the city. And I'm sure you've seen them and had some discussions about them. So I am, but it's another reason why, the reason I bring it up, is it's another reason why I would urge you, should this pass, to really prioritize. Because if something were to go awry with some of those terms, and a, a decision was made on either end, that this grant wasn't going to continue to work out, then, you know, it could end abruptly. So, you know, I would hope you would keep that in mind, because we don't want anything to be wasted. But it's not a, it's not a sure thing. Well, it's not a sure thing right now. The government's not even open, and there's no funding available right now anyways. But, but you know what I mean? Because there's, there's terms that are, that are, have been, that are demonstrably problematic. But we, but I know, at least for me, I feel we're okay now. But, you know, that could change.
And, and that's, that is one of the challenges. We've gone to, obviously, the city attorney's waiting on. We've, we've done as much as we can do, but every time we send a message, nobody's home. So until we get that, you know, and that's, like I said, irregardless of the grant, I was sending people to Swiftwater anyway, right? That's the, that's the, the low bar for entry. It's only four classes.
It would be spread over a number of years or longer period of time?
Correct. When I got the increase, that was going to be, along with some other stuff, that was going to be the focus of the specialty stuff.
Yeah, and I have no problem for Swiftwater being a priority. You set the priorities there, you know better than I do. I'm just having, trying to have a general discussion about setting priorities, as long as you're setting them. And that you're also trying to stand up, hold teams, because you, you know, at some point, something could drop off, so.
Yep.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and I just wanted, thank you so much for your presentation. And I'm, I'm so glad Mayor Protam brought up the, some of the restrictions and conditions in this grant. But my question had to do with, if the grant, for some reason, it didn't pass, or did whatever, you, and you answered it, your priority would be the Swiftwater, regardless?
Regardless, because that, the hazmat is, I, I will tell, it's a heavy lift, and it's a, it's a large expense. I mean, the hazmat is the one that is, is a pretty high bar. There's chemistry, I mean, it, it, it's a real serious class or set of classes. The ropes kind of tie into the Swiftwater, like they're, they're kind of codependent. Like, we don't have any ten-story buildings that we have to slide. So the standalone thing is the Swiftwater. And so that's, that's why I did it in that order.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody in the audience, so we, who do we have in the audience? Oh, I didn't even see him. He was all the way behind, Mr. Contreras, Chief Contreras. Hey, hi there. So, would you like to make a public comment?
No.
We have none.
It was a try. We gave it a try. So do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez and a second by Councilmember Carnavale. Please vote. And motion carries all eyes. Thank you so much. Now we're looking at fiscal year 2024 and 2025 preliminary financial results. Do we have a staff report?
So Mayor Kevin Biersak, our finance director, is going to be making this presentation to you to give you an update on how we ended our last fiscal year and how that has impacted our reserve balances in a positive way.
Thank you, Ann. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council, City staff, and the listening audience. As usual, questions as we go along, or say them until the end? Thank you. So this year, we've, you're traditionally used to hearing about the general fund, but this year, we expanded a little bit, just because of some of the topics throughout the past year. And it would be a good opportunity to provide you with our current status. Keep in mind, we have been through our audit. We pretty much think that we're there. We will be submitting our draft financial statements to the auditors on November sixth. That's why this is labeled preliminary. So the four topics this evening are mostly general fund, Measure W, our new fund, AB-1600, or our development impact fee funds, or just impact fee funds, because some of them are, have a different qualification. And then our proprietary funds, the ones that are more like traditional accounting kinds of funds versus fund accounting. So these, the bulk, other than the last three or four slides, are general fund. So let's talk about what comes in the door. And traditionally, in the budget that you pass for this next two years, we talk about seventy percent plus is what we get from tax revenues. Well, this year, you can see that for the year that we're finishing up, we actually were at about seventy-six percent with respect to our tax revenues. Licenses, permits, services, and fees, sixteen percent this year, and eight percent for miscellaneous revenues and transfers. Keep in mind, those transfers are where we charge other funds for work that we do for those funds. Look at the tax revenue, budget versus actuals. It's pretty much on the money. You can see right there that we're at fifty-three million plus. And you can see the stratification with respect to the taxes. And, and a few slides down, you'll see some trend lines, and we'll talk about that in a bit. Sales tax, transactional use tax, meaning the original Measure B tax that was passed in 2010, that was initially sunsetted, but then the sunset was removed in the 2014 election. Property tax, vehicle license fee, the INLU. Our hotel or transit occupancy tax. Our user utility tax, franchise fees, and cannabis tax. And you can see where we were budgeted. Keep in mind, this is year two of a biennial budget, so sometimes you will see a little bit more variation in year two than in year one. If no questions? Let's talk about the other types of revenues. So other types of revenues was a, a big hit with respect to twelve million-plus budgeted and almost seventeen million dollars, just shy, with respect to the actuals. So from a services and fees standpoint versus licenses and permits. Services and fees, you know, when we do work for other people, whether it be plan check kinds of fees, or fees that we get from counties because we're part, from the county, because we're part of a task force or whatever, and there's a reimbursement involved, that type of thing. Intergovernmental, that was pretty much, it was about a third above, but that's monies that we get from other agencies. Citation, citations were down. That ties back to the concept of, you know, we budget for that, but there, sometimes they come in a higher, based on how fast they come, or sometimes they come in lower, based on there can be a lag. Property and interest, please don't necessarily tie back to that. The two things that will attribute the property interest, if you remember, we talked about that accounting gasp that we have to do with respect to, we have to look at fair market value at midnight on June 30th, and that was about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus up. But we reversed that immediately at twelve-oh-one, effectively, on July 1st. So that's five-hundred thousand, you can tie back to that. But it does make, make the numbers look good for the year.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Before you move on to the next slide, regarding citations, the large amount of a drop for 438 to 191, is that contributed to STVRs fines that STVRs are no longer issuing to illegal owners of STVRs?
Well, they can be issued, but we may not have collected on them. A big piece of it does tie back to on the public safety side, because for, public safety citations come in two colors. They come in the color of the general fund, but they also come in the color of the traffic safety fund. And so that can ebb and flow with respect to it, and so we can be off on our estimates overall. But I can share with you, in the traffic safety fund, our fines have come in very good, and we're accumulating dollars in our traffic safety fund, primarily because of motors. And we have, we have motorbikes out there, and we also have others sworn out there patrolling. And so in that respect, our traffic safety fund, we're building dollars over there. And so that's helping. But yes, some of it could be, it can be cannabis citations, it can be STVR citations, the like. And it, sometimes it's the lag.
Okay, thank you.
The other point on property and interest is just to point out, keep in mind, this being the second year of the budget, when we did this budget, interest rates were very low. So our elected treasurer, Greg, and his relationship with the two vendors that we work with, investment firms, when something has fallen off at like, that was getting a half or one or one and a half percent, and it matures, then he was reinvesting it anywhere from four to four and a half to five percent. So we've been seeing the merits of that interest, especially in this second year. So I did want to explain that. And then last but not least, between the COVID ARPA funding and the FEMA funding that we have received from Tropical Storm Hillary, we're pretty close with respect to what our estimates are. We're about eighty-thousand dollars off. But as you can see overall, from the other revenues category, a great boom this year. So when you look at the revenue summary in total, we had sixty-five million dollars budgeted, and we come in at seventy million plus. So that five, almost five million dollars gives us an extra seven and a half percent above budget. You're used to this slide, and this just hits home with respect to what we talked about in the first pie chart, that so much of it does come from taxes, but you can see the increment of services, licenses, and so forth, with respect to the overall percentage base.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Maybe you can remind me or educate us. We get sixteen cents per every property tax dollar that is paid.
Yes.
Correct? Now, the county gets the remainder.
Well, it starts with the county, sir, but then there's different agencies that it gets divided up amongst.
Correct. But once the other agencies, Coach of the Desert, Palm Springs Unified Disco District, mosquito vector control, and blah, 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 once all those are paid, the remainder, which is just the property taxes, okay? Since we only get a certain percentage. Now, what I heard, or I was told, that in 2035, Cathedral City will get a much larger amount.
If you can hold that thought for the trend chart, you're going to see over the three years that increase that we experienced. And we then budget for that kind of proportionate increase in this budget that you adopted in May. And that ties back to the fact that as we defees those redevelopment bonds, and we pay those bonds off every year, we get more property tax. So that sixteen percent is getting higher and higher and higher, from one year to the next. And you'll see a chart coming up soon.
Thank you.
So let's talk about the money that goes out the door, our expenses. So by department, you can see the budget versus the actuals on these next two slides. Second slide. In total, keep in mind, with all the budget adjustments, because we start with a, with a budget amount, the only way we adjust that budget amount is when we come to you in council and you approve a budget adjustment. So through the budget adjustments that we had, a lot of which tied back to Tropical Storm Hillary that you approved during this past year, our budget, adjusted budget appropriation, came in at seventy-nine-point-one million dollars. In the end, though, we only spent seventy-two million dollars. So we had a hundred-and-seven and a half percent on the revenue side, and we have ninety-one percent-plus expenditure rate on the expense side. Both good news. The breakout of those expenditures, you can see here, from a budgetary standpoint, that seven, that seventy-nine million was forty-two million in salaries and benefits, and thirty-seven million in operations. The reason it's so high in operations is because most of those budget adjustments that you approved throughout the year were operating budget adjustments. So actuals, when all is said and done, the actuals that came in with respect to the expenditures, just under forty million dollars from a salary and benefit standpoint, and thirty-two million plus with operations. So something to note there on the salary and benefits, albeit it's only about two-hundred, two, two million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or thereabouts. This goes back to the philosophy, from a budgetary standpoint, for salaries and benefit, we have to budget as though we have a full staff, because you have to budget as though you're a hundred percent. But we would not. And so that is an example of when you've heard that spoken before. And same kind of chart on the expense side, what this slide hits home on folks is the fact that when you look at the first, the first three colors, as you go up, the staff labor, the maintenance and operations, and the professional and technical services, that hits home on the fact that that's people. We do not produce widgets. We produce people. We produce services, and between our own internal staff labor, our maintenance and operations-type labor or services, and our professional and technical services, we're at eighty percent. So when you do a comparison, that almost fourteen-million-dollar deficit we could have had, we do have a deficit. That's the bad news. That's the only frown that we really have here tonight, I think. But everything else is, is, is a smile. So when we tie back to that, one-point-eight million dollars is what the deficit is that we're looking at for this year. Vice of an almost fourteen-million-dollar deficit. So this is where Councilmember Gutierrez and the, you all, you can see some of the trends that we tie back to. So when you look at the taxes, for example, the sales tax, the use tax, you can see, so in twenty-three, we, so in sales tax, we, we're dipping a little bit, from twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five. The transaction and use tax, if you notice, we dipped from twenty-three to twenty-four, but we had a little bump up in twenty-five. And that what, that's what, what that tells us is that Cathedral City residents are buying planes, trains, and automobiles. Because when they do buy those kinds of vehicles, based on their residency, as we all know, we pay our use, our sales tax to include our use tax, based on where that vehicle will reside. Property tax, back to your point, Councilmember Gutierrez, you can see the trend. It's going up a little bit every year. Some of that is because of new rooftops, and or new businesses that come into our city. But a lot of it also ties back to the defeasing of those bonds. And we, in, in the budget you just approved in May, we tie back to about a five-to-six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase per year on property tax, primarily due to, due to that defeasing of the bonds. And if we get more? And if we get more rooftops, that's a bonus because we really don't forecast the rooftop aspect.
Great to hear.
In lieu license fee also is proportionate with not quite the same proportion, but from a property tax standpoint, the in lieu license fee increases on an annual basis as well. TOT, back to a little bit, our, our peak year was in '22, where to include all of our STVRs. But back on the slide, when you saw TOT, we budgeted 4.9 million, and this year we came in at 5, 5,25,000, a number like that. We were almost $100,000 higher on TOT. In mid-year, we were concerned. We had a, and traditionally, you can't look, as you know, you can't look at our 12 months and say, we're going to get a 12th every month. We know the seasonality of the valley and, and when we have good months and when we have not so good months, but we really did well in the second six months on our TOT. We recouped because on the first six months, we were lower than the previous year. User utility tax, burn baby, burn, heat is a good thing, because when we have high electric bills, we get high user utility tax. So keep in mind, because of the fiscal year cuts off in June, July and August last year were mu- much warmer ironically than the July and August we just experienced. So our user utility bills where we get, our biggest bang for the buck is out of electricity. Franchise fee taxes, and then last but not least cannabis. In cannabis, our peak year was in '22, that's when we had the most. We're not quite back to that, but we're almost back to that. We're about 400,000 shy in 2025 of versus where we were in 2022. Same kind of slide for the other categories, services and fees, you can see how the services and fees have increased. Permits, services that we provide. Licenses and permits went down a little bit from '23 to '24, but we had a good bump up in '25. And some of this, keep in mind, some of this ties back to that fee study stuff we do. So it can be volume, but it's also in, as our fees have increased, and now that we have our most recent five-year fee study done, these next four years will just be CPIs. There'll be cost of living based on the DLS, the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Property and interest, we talked about that with respect to higher interest rates, you can see three, in 2023, the property and interest was pretty low because they're just, we weren't getting the rates that we're getting today. Intergovernmental, about the same, kind of flat. Citations, we've talked about the decrease there. Miscellaneous revenues and transfers, they're, they're within range. The last one, I just wanted to point out for COVID and FEMA, keep in mind, all that $15 million of ARPA money that we received, this was the final year of ARPA money. So that one point, that $1 million that we received from COVID and FEMA, 658 or 85,000, sometimes I transpose, but that's the final tranche of ARPA money. So ARPA is gone. So what we have outstanding is FEMA, and that will be on the forecasting slide, which is coming up.
Okay, Kevin, since you're talking about FEMA in the past, you mentioned that some of the grants or reimbursements regarding a lot of the work that needs to be done and will be done regarding Tropical Storm Hillary were obligated. Have you heard anything as far as money that were being repaid from?
We're hearing a little bit. I mean, we, we just had dialogue from our, to our FEMA reps within the last week on this, and ironically, on what Chief Contreras was talking about with respect to the acceptance of the grant that you approved just most recently in the previous item. Things are stalled, and they are stalled at the DHS level, which is the parent to FEMA, tied back to anything above $100,000 reimbursement requires the secretary's approval. And so that's where we're at. And on, we have four, three projects that have been obligated at FEMA. We have a fourth one that is one step below obligation. I signed off on it two weeks ago in the FEMA portal.
Now, when you say obligated, that means that it is awaiting payment?
It is awaiting, it's obligated at the FEMA level, but it's awaiting approval by the department secretary.
Oh, still.
So Secretary Noem and or staff and Secretary Noem needs to sign off. The irony, this is an interesting one to share with you. Over here under the two bridges for Cathedral Canyon and for Date Palm, the water control devices, that was a project because fortunately, they were not damaged, but they were covered in mud. And so we had to, as you all approved this past year, for the public works folks, they had a contract to go out and get those, the waterway cleaned out. And fortunately, the water control devices were not damaged, but that is a claimable reimbursement. Ironically, on that one, not only is that one waiting on secretary, the secretary of DHS to approve, but that one also requires the offices of our two U.S. senators and our congressman to sign off on. Don't know why, but for water, it does. So that is the one that is not obligated. So, so the water control devices hasn't made it to obligation. What has made it to obligation was all of the debris removal, which is significant, and we had 11 road improvement projects, four of which have been approved. Seven are, have been denied, and we went through the appeal process, and that appeal was denied verbally, but we haven't received final notification that it was denied. But for those, for the debris removal, which is significant, and the four road improvement projects, those four road improvement projects are called damages, and they're divided up into two projects. So we have three projects that are obligated, but we're waiting for someone to sign off and then release the funds. And when FEMA signs off, FEMA doesn't pay us. FEMA sends the authorization to CalOES, and CalOES actually pays us the 75% that is a hit to FEMA, and then the 75% of the remaining 25% which comes out of their budget at CalOES. But we actually get reimbursement from CalOES.
Kevin, can you give the council the approximate dollar amounts that are obligated and unobligated?
Right here, they are on the next slide. So when you see with respect to the footnotes at the bottom, you will see that we are anticipating 3.6 million plus. Right now, we just have it divided up into 1.8 million in year one and 1.8 million in year two. If we get it in year one, the more the merrier, and it's sooner. And then the other footnote you see there is, ties back to what we already talked about with respect to, it is the 685,000 for the final ARPA tranche, and we did receive 375K in FEMA monies this year. So if you look at this chart, this chart, we tie back to our results, and then we tie back to the next two years with respect to the budget that you have approved. So when you look at this year's results, you already know about the, the one point, almost 1.8 million deficit, that takes us from a 41.5 fund balance at the beginning of the year to 39.7 plus. So when you look at that, based on our fund reserve policy of the 33% minimum and the target of 50%, this year, we're finishing the year at 52%. Yay, that's a win, that's a thumbs up. When you get to the next two years with respect to it, for the, this is the bud, this is purely the budgets that were passed. When we come to you in December and we give you the first quarter results, we will have the first quarter adjusted budget based on actions taken in July, August, and September. But in year one, based on our current forecast, we would be at a 44% number, and in year two, we would be at a 30%, 7% number. Will it be that? Look at what happened last year. We, we, we tend to budget high, and we try to be conservative on our revenue budgeting so that we're pleasantly surprised.
We would like to be pleasantly surprised.
So if there are no further questions on the general fund, we'll move on. I'm seeing none. Yes, sir?
Quickly ask you, since you previewed the, the next meeting when we'll be looking at the actual, where we've added items to the budget, and there was talk about rollovers, is that going to be a part of that meeting too?
Rollovers will be, rollovers will be in November, and first quarter results will be in December, and that is listed on the future council items.
Okay.
But rollovers will be next meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Rita, do you have a question? You're my last person to ask.
So Measure W, moving on. This slide ties back to, and this slide ironically is very similar when we had our last meeting with the Finance Advisory Committee, and we met with them in September. So we had, based on the $5 million that we hope, which is a half percent of the 10 million that we hope to get with our Measure B, a quarter would have been 1.25 million. We actually got in a little bit under that, 1.080 million, and that's for the quarter of April, May, and June. The expenses, what were budgeted that we brought forth to you all and that you approved at different council meetings prior to the end of the fiscal year came to 762, and of that, we spent 647. We didn't, there are a few things that will be part of the rollover that you mentioned, Mayor Protemp, that didn't hit here because they were things that didn't get purchased or received by the end of the June 30th, by the end of the fiscal year. So the forecasted surplus was 487, we're showing a surplus of 432 at the end of the fiscal year. So you think of that surplus, that's the starting fund balance for our Measure W fund.
Now, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Since you touched on the fourth ambulance, now, the cost of it, of course, to purchase a new ambulance and also to pay the, the staff, now, the cost, total cost was about 470 or so, $470,000. Now, the four, the fourth ambulance has been operational for what, three or four months now?
The rollout was July 1st.
Okay, so since that time, that ambulance, thank God, has saved a lot of lives, but also has produced revenue to the city. Do you know how much approximately maybe, I don't know if it's how difficult it is?
Can we save that till December?
Sure.
Okay. But I can share with you that when we look at quarter over quarter of the first quarter of last fiscal year versus the first quarter of this year, just tying to that line item, we have a significant increase that is in two part. It is in two part from a standpoint, it's the Measure W, but it's also the fee increases that were approved.
Great. I'd like to see when, when that comes around, the difference between the three ambulances and the bump that we received by having?
And we will collaborate, we will collaborate with the fire department and the fire chief. So moving on, AB 1600 impact fees, these are, are different funds that we have, and we just wanted to share with you where we're ending at the end of the year with respect to this. And we will be coming to you in December with respect to the annual AB 1600 report, which is a requirement to file with you by the end of December, but also with respect to the additional AB 1600 commitments that we've been able to garner from what was initially identified in the CIP plan that you approved in the budget process. But some of those projects were going to be able to divert from what we originally thought would be the funding source to be impact fee sources. So that will free up monies for other kinds of opportunities. And then last but not least, proprietary funds and the balances that we have there. Our equipment replacement fund at $6 million plus, our insurance fund at $14 million plus, our technology fund at 1.7. Keep in mind, that's how we paid for our enterprise resource planning system, that almost $900,000 that we implemented over the last five to six years, and then our facilities fund.
And are vehicles part of equipment?
Yes, sir. And they are the primary component of the equipment, but then also IT, major IT purchases, that type of thing, intangibles as well, like software. So that, folks, any further questions or any discussion that you may have?
Let me start with this end. Do you have any questions, Mayor Protemp?
I have one additional question.
You go for it.
Now, where does it fall, or does it have a fund, or how does it work for monies that we receive from BRTAC regarding AB 2381 or monies that are collected from, from BRTAC?
So comes, so the majority of that comes from the property tax bills, and we get the two primary doses based on payment one and payment two that people make. We also get a cleanup, but tied to that, three, it gets divided into three different ways. 76% of it is a pass-through that we pay directly to BRTAC. So it, because it doesn't, that money that comes through for when you all approve that schedule every spring, that money comes to us. So then we pass it through to them, and that's part of the contract that you, that's buried in when you approve those rates. 12% of it comes to the general fund, and 12% of it goes to the AB 939 fund, the environmental fund.
And the environmental fund, would, do we have any interest to see that, or do we need to know what the balance is or?
You, you see, the, the environmental fund is what funds a few of our people or a portion thereof, and then many of our projects, like for example, when we zero, when we here in the city, zero scape a yard, when we take a green space and turn it into drought tolerant. So ironically, this year, our AB 939 fund is going to end with a fund balance around $2.6 million.
Oh, wow.
And that's part of, that's part of the financials that we're working on with respect to the 60-plus funds. These were just some of the highlight funds, just based on discussions. We can add the AB 939 fund in the future.
And the other, other money show are the franchise fees, is that the other BRTAC money? You said the 12% goes to the 939, the other 12%?
That comes, that 12% comes into the general fund and so on there. When we talk about taxes and we talk about the 76% of taxes, and one of those line items was franchise fees, we have five different franchise fees, one of which is BRTAC.
Franchise.
Edison Gas Company, TOE, that's a franchise fee. Any other questions?
Any questions? Are we all good?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the wonderful news.
Thank you so very much.
You're quite welcome.
And are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, the following comment was received for the record, provided to the members of the city council and made available at the entrance for public inspection. Sunshine Herrera expressed her concern related to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 preliminary financial results. Are there any other members that wish to comment? I see none, Mayor.
Thank you so very much. So following, we are having any discussions on future agenda items?
You know, since we have this new cannabis ordinance and everything been changing, the Cannabis Task Force, I'd like to revisit that, maybe have council or staff reevaluate who's on it, maybe have some new task force members come on. We haven't changed it in a long time. Maybe there's some people out there that would want to join that. So if we could discuss that down the road.
Yeah, we could. I know it's a, it's not a committee or commission of ours, it's a city manager's committee, but we could talk about.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Would you like to have a presentation on it?
Uh, yeah, maybe, maybe even improve it, come up with some ideas, have staff come with some ideas. I personally have one concern about cannabis owners being on the task force, you know, dispensers or cultivators, and so I think I like, we should discuss that as well.
One, one comment that I did hear is that cannabis owners are invited to participate, and they are part of it, but they do not attend the meetings.
Okay, that's what we could discuss too, get an attendance record, see who's been?
Yeah, they haven't.
Okay. Is that cool?
We can look into that. We, they're not, I, I think it's been an ad hoc committee of the, of the city managers, I understand it, but I can work with the city clerk's office to see if we have the records of their participation and attendance.
Okay, yeah, got you.
Okay with you? Yep, okay, okay. Any other future agenda items? No?
City council race?
Are you racing? We want to know. Do you have a voice, Gaisan? And we don't?
Monetary race.
We don't have anything going out to a closed session, is that correct, Mr. City Man, I mean, Mr. City Attorney? So we are done, we are adjourned for the night. Thank you, everybody, for staying, and be safe driving home. Thank you, everybody, for staying, and be safe driving home.